...we're all present. We have a pledge of allegiance and our invitation, and our invitation is to pledge our three screens. I've got the glasses on, so I'm looking for that one. It's hard to be as busy, like me, shy a little bit. Especially after we came through all that rain out there just a minute ago. I thought if I would come in, I'd be kind of all even with. Anyway, Chris, if you will lead us in our prayer tonight.
Pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do come, before we deny the honors, spare a thanksgiving for all the many blessings that you've been poured out of our county. Well, we thank you for each one who's represented here. Lord, we thank you for whatever has given us out of harm's way. Lord, we thank you for the many prayers we enjoy. We thank you for the men and women who served to protect those prayers. We thank you for each one who has served sacrifice. And we thank you for this group tonight, as they sit in a position of worship and ask you to give them wisdom in the sermon as they roll out the business of the market. All this we ask you, Lord.
I don't know if I'm allowed to make a joke, but I certainly am. Other than the fact that I'm made out of sugar and I might melt coming in, I'll walk you out of the difference.
What are you asking about? You did not say that.
I got an email. Our next order of bitterness is to recognize any elected officials who are here tonight. If you are elected official, please stand to be recognized. All right, everyone, let's get going. Right, and next, to add them is the question of veterans. If you are a veteran, would you please stand? And Chris gave a pledge of invitation and he feels that standing to be recognized and all other departments, if you'll stand to be recognized. Next to the job, moving quite along, it's working good tonight. All that rain out there is our agenda. At this time, commissioners are making any additions to the proposed agenda from you guys. I have two, the Russian minute, and I'm tailing him. And then at the end of the meeting, prior to the commissioners' report, we will need to close sessions because of legal matters, and I'll read that motion at the time. At this time, I can hear, is there a siren going off? Y'all here?
I don't know.
The seven, do you? And all that goes into the basement?
This one's right. We have all the time, and if he runs, we'll run. Keep your radio on.
Yeah. We have to go up the channel. We're right behind the guy. The latest thing that happened was when it comes through to get a talk on out, someone in the audience would track on the computers or, you know, anything like that. Anyway, we will follow the chief's guideline, the details of the roads. We're gone, and we didn't bring the meeting this over. Two items that I would talk about, the incentive agenda, I'm tailing them for academy manager, close session at the end, prior to commissioners' report. And at this time, I'd like to ask commissioners if no other agenda is being presented, or motion to adopt a agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt it, with adding two items.
And motion, Chris Hudson, addition of two items. Second, Chris Holbrook, addition of two items. All in favor, if you'd like to. Thank you very much. Let's see what we have. Citizen recognition, anyone here who failed to sign up with the clerk, but would like to speak, commissioners, about any topic, please come up at this time, state your name and your address and the subjects you'd like to talk about. And we're going to hand them at this time. Anyone who would like to speak about any subject that's under Citizen of Cleveland County or Cleveland County itself, please step up to the podium, name and address. And clerk, be it.
Yes, sir.
Come once, come twice. Come twice. Here you go. We'll move on to the next agenda, which is the consent agenda, and I'll turn that over to our county manager, David here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have six items for your consideration to see. The first one, item A, is the tax payers' monthly report for the month of May. At the end of May, county general real and personal property taxes were ninety-seven point four-nine percent collected, slightly ahead of last year's pace and exceeds our ninety-seven percent budget goal with one month left remaining to report. Item B is the tax assessors' monthly report for May 2013. During the month of May, we had property taxes of eight hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. We had property tax supplements in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. Item C is a budget amendment in the workers' compensation insurance fund. We're asking you to appropriate one hundred thousand dollars in workers' compensation fund balance to be used to cover claims settlements. Item D is a budget amendment in the cooperative extension department. We're asking you to accept one thousand six hundred and eighty dollars in registration fees to be used in the master gardeners program. E is a request from the sheriff's office to present Francina Anne Jones, her service weapon, upon her retirement after thirty years of services as a law enforcement officer. And item F, the one that you just added, is also a budget amendment in the workers' compensation fund. We're asking you to accept three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in insurance funds to settle some workers' compensation. Mr. Chairman, if all happens.
First, you heard the manager speak about the consent agenda. If there's any questions about any practical matters of agenda or any division of. Next question, the clerk?
I'll second.
Alan, all in favor of the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. Oh, now we come to the fifth round. As always, it is a pleasure to be able to recognize special things that go on in the county, not only events, but especially people who are impacting the county in a great way. And I just want to ask you to come up and share us the present presentation of Blue Ridge Music Heritage. Emma, this is you.
Thank you. And actually, Brownie, do you want to come up and join us? Just hang out back there. Okay. We are here this evening to share some very exciting news, and some of you have heard it before, but we have the official evidence in hand, which is that Cleveland County has been added to Blue Ridge Music Trails. I mean, you all have heard of the Blue Ridge Music Trails. Okay. They have completely revamped and expanded, and not only has Cleveland County been included in Blue Ridge Music Trails, but we are a hub. And so what that means is that there are five districts, and Cleveland County is the hub for the Flint Hills Special District. And we are so excited about this because it's one more great reason for visitors to come to Cleveland County. And we all notice they come, they stay in our hotels, they eat in our restaurants, they pay taxes, they often get jobs. So it's just one more way that we can see great positive impacts in the community. And Sam Lowry is up here as well. We're both here on behalf of Destination Cleveland County and Board and staff. And you want to take that up and present that and tell them what it says?
All right. This is the book, and we'd like to present that to you, and I'll read the inscription. I think it can only go in here, and it's to Cleveland County Board of Commissioners. We hope you share our excitement that Cleveland County has been included in Blue Ridge Music Trails as a music heritage of former guards, the staff and board of Destination Cleveland County, June nineteen, two thousand and thirteen. It is marked where we start, and it's titled Flint Hills Special. Starts out with Earl Scruggs, and then it goes on several pages, and goes to Don Gibson and Don Gibson Theater. So I hope you enjoy this, and on behalf of Destination Cleveland County, we present you this book.
And I would just say that the book, the trails are based on the Appalachian Regional Commission. You all know what that is. For anybody else who may not know what that is, I'm going to describe it as political works, which we are not part of A R C, Cleveland County is not, but in spite of that, because of several years of going to the Blue Ridge Heritage Area Conferences, which is one of the partners that has created these trails, we have been included in. So we're sort of the adopted children, I guess, and so we are, we're just, we're really excited and proud for our county that this musical heritage is going to be recognized. So we thank you all for all that you do to help us keep getting the word out there.
Email, I'm sorry, but one of you, Dan, would you like? Let me see how long it is.
It's long.
It's pretty long.
It's long. And there's a CD.
I won't say if you'd like to read it to the commissioners, but we'll put this in office.
Well, there's pages.
Well, thanks, and so the commissioners can look at it. And thank you for the presentation with all the work that you guys are doing. We value our champions. Thank you. We look forward to it.
Before then, we are going to leave. Stay tuned for the ready of the opening.
Ready.
Sorry to.
Thank you very much for this. Thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, any questions that you would like to add on the comments?
Thank you very much. I look forward to the opening and the excitement that comes with it, and I do want to be on the trail.
Great work, because it's a little, it's going to be great.
Thank you for all the work you've done. It is a success. It's going to draw people into the area of Blue Ridge. So I'd like to thank you all for your hard work.
What makes things happen is people are passionate about topics or ideas, and it's obvious that you're all passionate about working to make this a better place, a better quality of life, and we can't mention that.
Thank you. And again, we've always said, our champions want to make Cleveland County successful. Thank you. How do you want to say anything?
Ricky's guys, two shows, Saturday night. We got people coming from far and wide. Don't miss it. Stand Lowry, I want to have a ticket.
Looking forward to the.
You got tickets.
I got tickets. Thank you. Thank you all.
Chairman.
Yes, I am.
If I may, special recognition, I know that we have a bunch of private volunteer here, I feel curious, if there was one of them tonight, and I would like for you to recognize as a group.
Why don't we have each, all of them stand up and state the name of which department they're with. Period back there in the morning.
Yeah, Perry Davis, South Road Fire Department. Tom Warren, South Road Fire Department.
Joe Starnes, South Road Fire Department.
You a good, Katie's Fire Department?
I'm headed for T with it.
To the east, South Road Fire Department.
Ladies and gentlemen, back to you.
I am. I'm Perry Davis, that's why I'm Shannon.
She's our cook.
Best of all. Now, we have three public hearings. I know one of y'all really is looking forward to this. The first one here is the community development block grant Clearwater Project closeout. Paula, do you want to come up for me?
I'm not Paula. I'm filling in for Paula's, my best of mine.
Well, you can handle it.
Then on behalf of Isothermal Plant and Development Commission, I'll thank the board for allowing us to work with you on this project. It was a very interesting project, and we really enjoyed it and appreciate working this. The purpose of this hearing is to receive comments from area citizens concerning the county closing out the Clearwater Paper Project, C D G number zero-nine-eight-two-oh-eight-one. Cleveland County was previously awarded a million, one million dollars of community development block grant funds in the economic development category from the North Carolina Department of Commerce. The funds were used to assist Clearwater Paper Incorporated with street improvements, other public facilities, and with planning and application and administration of the project. Companies located in Chauvin, North Carolina. County has expended all C D G funds, and as a result of this assistance, the company has created over two hundred and eighteen jobs. So tonight, we request action to close out the project.
Commissioners, any questions? Clearwater project, close down? I see. Do we just need the, they just need the announcement of the answer? I think you have that. Oh, here, I think I have it. So any questions for both of you? At this time, we will prepare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Clearwater Project closeout, please come up, state your name and address at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Clearwater Project closeout, on board at this time. Hearing that, we're all over the period, and at this time, we'll declare, all in favor of the Clearwater Project closeout, or opposed?
I'll make a motion to close out.
Motion, Commissioner Allen, for a closeout of Clearwater Project. That's the second. Hold it. In session.
I'd just like to make a statement. You know, this is another win for the two hundred and some employees that got jobs, and they're well-paying jobs, so with this money, I know that it can't be ruled somewhere, but we were very fortunate that we got landed to do the voting booth, the turn lanes, the different projects that were there, that we didn't have to put on the backs of the local taxpayers themselves. So I think it's a win-win for the county, most of all, the two hundred and eighteen or so employees, that's a big win, because that will be a lot, and they can get yourself by the end of the day.
All I know is that you grew up out there and see that community club, it's really unreal, and that it's been a great thing for us together, and I'd like to thank all those who are in its development. So at this time.
Most people like to, they want to stay in the tour, and that's a job that's been involved in the community as well. Their employees have been very active in the volunteerism and different things that go on in the county, have been very active in the county, and that's appreciated, I think, too.
All in favor of the closeout of Clearwater Project? Please raise your hand. Thank you, and thank Clearwater for all that they do. Thanks for your presentation. I can get your name again, hold you just put it in as well as fire. Let's see. I'm going to announce this right without giving you trouble. Public hearing for economic development incentives for project known. Known, known, known. Pleased to pleasure, this time, the first one up, Christian. It is little Bella, it's on P V that does the insurance.
Yeah. Can you pronounce her name, please? Thank you. Hey, thank you guys for allowing me to be here today. I know it's always exciting when we have an incentive proposal to present, and as always, I just want to thank each and every one of you for the contributions that you continue to make towards our economic development efforts. You guys are just wonderful, and we really appreciate all that you do and the level of engagement that you have. I'm here to present the incentives agreement between Cleveland County and Project Known. I do want to reiterate that this is still a competitive project, thus the need to refer to it by the code name, Project Known. They are still examining other locations, so we will continue to refer to it by code name throughout this contract. I want the commissioners to be aware that the employment and capital investment projections have slightly been modified since we advertised in the paper. They've changed just slightly from what was published, but you should have the most updated version in your package for review. We're really, really excited about this manufacturing project, and as the contract outlines, this project would create approximately ninety-four new full-time jobs over the next three years, and would make a capital investment of approximately four point nine million dollars. There is just great potential long-term investment, long-term growth for this financially stable company, and we anticipate increased activity that shall be generated by this additional new capital investment that this company will be making during the complete project. The contract between the county and Project Known stipulates the company shall comply with employment capital investment projections, as is outlined in this document, and this company fully acknowledges that these incentives will serve as an inducement for the company to expand and operate in Cleveland County. This contract states that the grant terms shall continue for five years following initial verification, as long as the grant criteria remains satisfied. The annual incentive grant payments of the company shall be after the company has fully paid their property taxes every year, and will be sixty percent of the county general applicable taxes on real and personal property taxes for five years. Company again is fully aware that should they not meet the grant criteria, as is stated in this document, or fail to pay their property taxes, then the county does have the right to fully terminate this agreement and have no further obligations to the company. But are there any questions about this?
If you have a question, Christian, something to say.
Thank you guys again, I appreciate it.
At this time, we will open the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Project Known, please step forward, sit down, state your name and address.
The name Michael Person, who died at one oh seven, the Cameron Drive, in his mansion on the present, is then General Comer. And I'd like to echo a few of the comments that Christian just made, in the fact that we do appreciate the support that Cleveland County Mission gets towards the economy. You folks step out front, you make things happen, and we certainly do appreciate it. You have very blessed individuals too. I'd also like to say that I would like to ask you to approve this incentive grant tonight. We've got ninety-six new jobs being created, four point nine billion dollars in capital investment, and that, as Commissioner Hudson says, is a win-win for everybody, so we certainly do appreciate that. We continue to do onward and upward. We cut that uniform rate slightly, and with announcements such as tonight, we'll continue to continue that uniform rate, so we'll continue to give our citizens jobs. So on behalf of the six hundred chamber members, we urge you to pass this incentive grant. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Project Known, please come up at this time.
The name is Robert Williams, over at Paulston, next to the schoolhouse in the Big Wood Park. I think all of you, I would show all of you. I'd like to thank David Deere for having helped us around a little bit at the foothills Conference Center, the Clearwater Paper Project is a blessing, and I kind of like seeing that. I've dealt with a lot of big projects in my career, and that's a good thing. Do have a bit of complaint, I can, about not having access to whatever package you guys are looking at. I like to see those things, so I like to know what you guys are seeing. From what I can tell, and leave those, and what I just heard, and what I read in newspapers about Project Known, there's nowhere in the near vicinity of the past Project Clearwater Paper was in. I mean, just the fact that the average staff room's only got twenty-one thousand dollars, and the average Cleveland County salary is thirty-two thousand. That's a big step down in salaries. If you take a few supervisors, a handful of supervisors, one handful of supervisors with relatively good salaries, everybody else is making minimum wages. So this is, this is not, in my way of thinking, a plum project that Cleveland County would like to have a lot of. I mean, we need to find jobs for people that have skills for measuring with the minimum wage, but we need to set our goals a little higher also. So, and that being said, we do need, we do need jobs, so I'm not against this project, but I believe we need to cash our nets a little bit higher if we go. We've got, we've got more room in the foothills conference center. We need to open another. In us, we're parked, hey, we've got plenty of room up around Paulston, and we could stand a job up there, too. So again, I would like to see these packages. I'd like to see what you guys are looking at, and what kind of decisions you're making, so I can, you know, I've got an opinion, and I like to express it more than just you. And also regarding expressing opinions, what I said about this project, if you will go to Facebook, and even I had said these two words together in Shelby Star, if you look at Shelby Star article about this project, if you look at the comments people are making in the face with, they're mild compared to what I just said. My comments are mild compared to what they said, and I made a copy of others' ones. I like it. Even Jerry, never make a copy of it. You guys see what other people in this county are looking at, they're thinking. And I don't see anybody else sitting here saying that, but this is, this is not a proper project. So that's all I have to say.
Anyone who would like to speak for or against Project Known, please step up. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? Here you go, a comment? Christian?
Comment?
Yeah, I just want to say I appreciate your comments. I thought it might be wise just to add a little more commentary associated with this project. I think the important thing to note, when we are working on economic development projects, and projects that we are working on, the diversity that you see among the projects are pretty phenomenal. You have companies that are looking to create jobs that start out at seventy-five to eighty-five thousand dollars, that would be the Facebooks, and the Apples, and the Roodles, and the A T Ts that we've recruited. And you also have some other manufacturers whose wages are not going to be up tomorrow. The issue that persists in our county is that people need jobs, and they need all the types of jobs here. So we feel that this project is very substantial. Ninety-four new jobs is better than zero new jobs. What we are proposing with commissioners, what we are proposing to the commissioners is relatively small in the grand scheme of things in terms of incentives. And the beauty about the incentive packages that the commissioners put together and that they approved is that they're completely performance-based. Now, that allows us to protect the taxpayers. Your company must pay their property taxes in order to receive anything back. This company is a good company. They're creating quality jobs, and while the average salary may be a little bit lower than what we would prefer, they offer substantial benefits. And I can tell you- And I can tell you, there are a lot of people out there that would be joking to have a job rather than sitting and knowing about. So for us, this project is just as important as the Clearwater Papers, just as important as the AT&amp;Ts. So we feel like it is in our best interest to accommodate them and to give them support. They could have chosen and still have the option to choose many other locations in the United States overall. Thank you.
I have a comment that I'll vote. A comment that I'll allow. So Christian may have. Robert, if you may step back to the podium and make your comments.
I believe in my statements that I'm not against this project, but I don't see the trade benefits in a lot of minimum wage jobs. And that's the way, that's the way the numbers work out, and I'm good with that. I know we need to find folks that don't have a job and pay taxes, but if we work the minimum wage, you're not going to pay those taxes. You're not going to pay the living house and pay a lot of rent for that. That's just the way the numbers work out. I understand we need to have this, and I know you guys are going to vote for it. If I was there, sitting in your seat, I'd probably vote for it, too. But I'm saying we need to focus our priorities and our efforts and our incentives to try to meet at least county average jobs instead of way below county average jobs. And I'm not trying to throw off on this project. I don't know who these folks are. I don't know what you guys are seeing, but from what I've seen, the numbers are not good.
Thank you, Robert. One more time, anyone wishing to speak for or against Project NAM? Please step up to the podium this time. Seeing number one, hearing number one, at this time, we'll have to declare the hearing closed. Commissioners, if you have anything to say.
I guess I'd like to make this statement. I can see where Robert's coming from, but this is a job that definitely needs more. Some of our workers are not as skilled to take the job to Clearwater or any other place. And it's one thing that's important, you know, that we can provide jobs. We've always got our goal set high, that we would love for every job coming to the county to pay above average wages. But it just so happens that this is one of the jobs that don't, just like Clearwater pays a lot, this one pays a little, so it's one thing that when we're working on economic development, sometimes you can't get everything you want. We've got to take sometimes what we can get to help our people. And that's not saying this is a job we just have to pay because it is one we're still having to compete for. It is not a done deal. And I appreciate what Robert said, and he's right. Our goals are set high, but in the meantime, sometimes we've just got to take what we can get to help our people move along.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say a couple things. Number one, when you're involved in economic development, you have to diversify your efforts. You can't recruit with any labor force that I'm familiar with. You can't recruit high-level jobs for your labor force. The labor force here in Cleveland County is diverse, from the less educated to the more educated. It requires diversification of economic development projects. And all due respect to Mr. Williams, I think that the efforts of this economic development team and commissioners, when you look at what was achieved in the state of North Carolina, and this county basically achieved about close to forty percent of the total economic development projects that were acquired in the state of North Carolina last year. This is the only project that I'm really aware of that didn't meet some of the pretty high standards as far as salaries are concerned, but it does have good benefits. And as I've said earlier, I think in economic development projects, you've got to diversify and look at the makeup of your labor force and try to attract projects that will meet all facets of that labor force. And I think this project does meet some of the facets of our labor force.
And we have a... Robert, I can appreciate what you're saying, too, and we all have the goal of having high-paying salaries, skilled jobs. We have a large group of the community that all have jobs, and those people would probably enjoy having that job, and it also gives them an opportunity to get to be skilled, be a stepping stone to another higher-paying job that they may not have that opportunity with right off the bat. So, you know, it doesn't hurt us to have some jobs of that nature, even though it's not maybe our ideal jobs that we want. And like Commissioner Holbrook just said, that we have done a very good job, even on the county, I commend you on the jobs that you have gotten for our community. And sometimes there are some opportunities that open up that we need those jobs as well, and we need more workforce.
I'd like to say, I mean, I appreciate all comments that were made. Sure, I appreciate you saying that if you were in our seat, probably would do the same thing, approve it if we do approve it. But I think the big thing on this, our economic development team is working hard to provide opportunities for our residents that they don't have to take. These jobs are going to be there. They're going to be somewhere. This is just another place where they can come to work. People can go to work, they can have benefits, and they can have self-esteem, and I commend our team for doing that. Y'all have done a good job. Of course, we'd like to have high-paying jobs here. Everybody would like to have those, but it takes all kinds. We're becoming more diversified based by the efforts of our economic development. So I appreciate what you're saying.
And I'll finish it up with, Robert, thank you for supporting it. But I know a real big question back there is information prior to. And I may be wrong on my part in what I may say, but it's just how I feel. We have an economic development team. Our appointee is Commissioner Holbrook. And what I have asked in the past is that I not be told anything that's going on in economic development as to the what is taking place in that arena and how they're developing this project. When I first hear about it is when I do the agenda. So I've got a few days there. I'll wait and listen to what Christian has to say, what Eddie has to say, before I make my judgment. But I have asked repeatedly, county manager can tell you, commissioners can tell you, I have asked heatedly. Do not tell me what this project can tell, because if I don't know, I can't put it out in the public, I cannot make comments on it until it comes to fruition. So on my part and on your part, I know where you stand, that you want that information to be announced, but I've asked not to be told, because what I do not know, I cannot leak. And we've got a team out there that's working on this. They are a good team, and I do, but I do respect you asking the question on it. But you're getting your information pretty much within a few days of what I'm given. And I think that all I'm going to tell you, I'm telling you as seriously as I'm sitting here. And the manager and the commissioner, and they will tell you, our EDC team puts these things together, and then they inform us, okay, we've got a good project coming. And I'd say this is conducive to the one way that's a lot of work out. Thank you for supporting. Thank you, Robert, David, that's our... Get this, David, for a couple hours. But anyway.
I think what Robert was referring to, and that is available package. We received our package that we've got here. Tell us a little bit about it. He's on Sunshine, isn't he?
Yeah, let me explain to you that legal ad needed to be put in the paper ten days prior to today. So we put the legal ad in the paper with slightly different numbers. When we sent out the agenda with the actual incentive agreement that had the new numbers in the public, it's on our website, so what they saw is what the public saw. It was only that the legal ad had to be put in ten days ago, and those numbers really didn't get firmed up to the middle of last week. So everything that the public, that the commissioners saw regarding this project, the public saw, so it was just a slight change in numbers within that ten days to the middle of last week.
Anyone wishing to speak for or against... I don't believe we're listening. Or you're listening, it's good. Any other discussion? All the papers ready to go ahead? All right. All the papers in conversation.
Oh, excuse me. I don't think we ever had a motion or a second to approve the project. If you don't have that, I...
Go back. Make a motion to approve that motion from last year. Set off. Thank you, all three. Any other discussion? All the papers ready to go ahead? And everyone again. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is our county budget for 2013, 2014. And the gentleman who has put the new budgets together, who has worked on this one and has come up with a galling vote for us, is our county manager, David Dear. And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The process began probably back in February, and the U.S. Board of Commissioners has several work sessions and public meetings working on that year before I came back to the board and the order department. So you've been working on it down at the deep end for quite some time, therefore I'm not going to go back and then go into a lot of detail. I'm going to get the highlights and go through it from a high level here, and then we'll go from there. We're presenting to you the ninth balanced budget with no reduction in services from county-funded programs. County general property tax rate remains the same at fifty-seven cents per one hundred dollars evaluation. County-wide school supplement tax remains the same at fifteen cents per one hundred dollars evaluation. We recommend that the county volunteer fire service district tax be increased from three cents to five cents per one hundred dollars evaluation. We also recommend that the number seven volunteer fire service district be increased from three cents to four cents. This is based upon a recommendation from their board of directors. We recommend the landfill fee schedule be amended based on professional actuarial studies that were done, changing the annual household fee for convenience center usage from fifty dollars to sixty-two dollars. The landfill tipping fee be adjusted from thirty-three dollars per ton to thirty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents per ton. The household fee has not been increased since its inception over twenty years ago. The emergency medical fee schedule is also amended to keep current applicable federal reimbursement rates. We are recommending a two percent cost of living allowance for all county employees. This is the first salary increase for county employees since the economic recession began back in two thousand and eight. Retirement system rates have been increased by point three two percent, or up to one-third of one percent due to actuarial adjustments by the state treasurer's office. Employer paid individual health insurance rates will increase by eight percent. County general fund contributions to Cleveland County schools are reduced by approximately five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. This is due to a reduced student population. This leaves the school funding rate per pupil at the same level as it was this current fiscal year. Federal and state mandated social services program costs are increased by four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. County general fund support or purpose compensation is increased by two hundred and ten thousand dollars due to increased claims activities. Law enforcement and detention center operations are increased by a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. That's net of employee costs. Emergency medical service operations are increased by a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That's also net of employee costs. In summary, the cost for public safety, human services, and education tend to increase in times of economic downturn like we are in now. And thanks to the foresight and excellent leadership from our board of commissioners, Cleveland County's been able to maintain an excellent level of service throughout the whole economic downturn without a tax rate increase for many, many years. We continue to be physically diligent and work hard to make Cleveland County a better place to live and survive in the economics of the past. As you can see here, we'll stick pie chart of our Cleveland County revenues. And this is a combination of both the primary fund, general fund tax rate, and the county school tax rate. We tried to put them all together to show where the total taxes go. And as you can see there, property taxes are seventy-one point two percent of our total revenues. That's more in one pot than we'd like to see, but unfortunately, our revenue streams are limited by the state of North Carolina, and we work with what we've got to work with. You can see that our sales taxes are about thirteen percent. Purports fees and interest come in just about ten percent, and federal, state, and local funds of other nature are about three percent. Going over to the expenditure side of things, you can see that education takes in about one-third of all the monies that are generated here locally. Public safety comes in at about twenty-five percent. Human services is about sixteen percent. Those three items are the vast majority of the reason the county government exists is to provide those services to the citizens at local level. And we think that our department heads and employees provide an excellent service to the citizens of Cleveland County. And that nutshell, commissioners, is your county budget for two thousand, thirteen, two thousand.
Thank you, David. Commissioners, at this time, if any questions of county manager, budgets that you'd like to make comments on, and I'd ask Robert if she would just keep the expenditure side up there. At this time, if there's any comments about budgets that you'd like to make, and our questions of Mr. Dear. Here at this time, we'll declare a public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against budget for 2013, 2014? Budget has been given to the public since June sixth. It has been placed in particular locations around the county. Anyone has had an opportunity to come speak to county manager or any county commissioners about the budget. At this time, anyone who would like to speak for or against the budget for 2013, 2014, please come out and state your name and the address.
Good evening, David. Good to see you guys. My name is Kevin Thor, another thirteen, hands on the road. We'd like to briefly talk to you about the fire service tax increase. First of all, good to see you guys, and thank you for allowing us a short opportunity to talk with you guys. Kerry, I had to hand out to the rain kind of weather. It's not really a professional pass out now. I want to talk briefly about funded fire districts or fire protection in general, and then Jimmy's going to come up and talk about a few specific costs and how costs have changed over time in the past twenty years or so, the things that were faced. And then Joe's going to give you a specific incident example of a specific fire department discovered on this. They owe, I'm sure you guys know them, nine departments in the service district. There's two ways to fund fire districts. I guess there's multiple ways to fund fire districts, but North Carolina doesn't actually allow funding of fire protection in North Carolina in two ways. It's either through a fire protection or a rural fire protection district which is voted in, and I saw that you had Lattimore there. So there's three divisions in the county, Lattimore, Hunter, or Rippey. And Paulston, and the rest of them are the service district, which is the nine main departments. And then the municipal departments come from municipal government. I've been in fire service for twenty-nine years, and it's kind of a passion and a career as well. And each community must decide what level, what the corporate level, investment for fire protection. There's, you can just put a check in the box and have it done, and the fire department's going to respond and wet down what's left. Or you can have an act of fire protection where they're going to be robust, and they're going to try to lessen fire insurance rate as much as possible, and they're going to get there in time and fashion, and they're going to protect those. City of King Mountain, some others around, Fire City of Terrible, uh, I don't know where it's far, Charlotte, because that's kind of, an anomaly, it's too big, but the, the local municipalities around, their budgets are probably, obviously, Sheriff's is probably nine hundred thousand, Shell's is probably three and a half million or better. But what I want to speak to you briefly about is that, that the current rate, and what we're asking with this funding, is the minimal cost or the cost of doing business. It's the cost of building fire stations, putting fire apparatus into stations, buying turnout gear, buying payers, buying equipment that the firefighters need. That fire protection provided this county at a hundred percent free when it comes to labor. And that labor's what's important. I'll get back to those municipal departments I talked about for a second. If you look at any one of those municipal departments, out of every dollar of your budget, eighty-five percent of that budget goes to personnel costs. So, the remaining fifteen percent are fifteen cents out of each one of those dollars spent is what, what I'm speaking to behind the cost of doing business. So, while this does, this budget does include a tax increase, to simply get to the cost of doing business in a simple equation, it's X has to equal Y. So, it's the cost of that fire protection has to equal what the fire district generates in the fire tax. And right now, it's less. Right now, the cost of fire protection in this county is less than what that service district's actually generating. So, that's the, the reason it has to be an increase. However, we don't protect those volunteers. In the days of doing fundraisers, we're going, they're, they're not coming back. Uh, these guys can go out, not even from their days of, of working there. We would work all day, twelve hours, and then a thousand dollars. They'd pay a thousand dollar money about seven hundred here. They might buy three payers, love, probably two, two. So, the, the, we can't ask these guys in the house to do that anymore. We need them trained, we need them ready to answer calls, to call. Volume, Waco, when I joined in nineteen eighty-four, was about seventy-five call a year, or, yeah. Now, it's close to four hundred. So, they have all they can do, and all of the things that's required in the home, to just do the training that's required, and answer the fire calls, and receive calls that come in. They don't have the time for, for the training, for the fundraisers. And even if they did, they're not headed enough to even went there for a while. We really need those guys. So, what the message I wanted to get across tonight is if we don't protect those volunteers, we can't afford the fire protection in this county if it goes full paid. There's also a statute or requirement on fire protection, fire, these fire protection districts where the rural or service can only have fifteen cent fire tax. This is going from three to five, caps fifteen cent. If you asked me tonight what it would cost to put, to put full paid SaaS in these nine fire departments, it'd be over fifteen million dollars. If you paid them, plus what we're asking you tonight, if you took the fire tax of fifteen cent, David, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you took this fire tax of fifteen cent, the service district would only generate five and a half, six million dollars. We couldn't afford the fire tax. So, two things would have to happen if you had a fully paid. If we lost all the volunteers that were fully paid, first thing you'd have to do is we'd have to restructure the fire parks in the county, and then, then that tax rate would go to fifteen cent, or the county would have to pull that as a full-fledged apartment and fund it out of the general actuarial tax. There's one, two ways to do that. What I'm trying to say to you is we have to do everything possible to shore up the volunteers and keep them as long as possible. And the way to do that is to fund them at an appropriate level where they can go out and provide the services that we've all come to expect since this fire service district was generated in the seventies, and these fire parks first became charged in the forties and fifties. Uh, the late, the late forties and early fifties. The biggest thing that they're facing today is a way to take care of volunteers, and also should build fire stations, that's all. I know you guys have heard me say this before, these fire parks were charged in the fifties and sixties, so that all those stations are fifty years older, but that's about the life of a fire station. Buying a fire truck is tough. Paying us on a fire truck is tough. But to pay us on a million and a half dollars is even tougher, and it's a long period of time to pay that back. So, the capital problems that these departments that are facing in the near future, I have some pretty large debt associated with those. They can't make, they can't build buildings, buy fire trucks, and buy the equipment that Jimmy's just talking about at the current funding, funding, this is just not a problem. One plus one equals two, that's the word. So, I wanted to say that. And then one other thing I wanted to mention is there is some large issues that we also are going to face, uh, at the state level. There's a group in Raleigh that works for, that's part of the state legislature called Program Evaluation Division. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with them or not. Uh, but it's sort of like the fiscal research section, and they do research. Well, they've been tasked with looking at all the fire risk programs, the state of North Carolina, what's funded and what's provided for us by the general assembly. So, there's one report due to them in October, there's another one to do in December. There's certain legislators in Raleigh that want to do away or aggressively change some of the programs that we use. We use a volunteer safety workers' comp fund to pay our workers' comp insurance. That's under fire. They may do away with that. If they do, our workers' comp will go five times when it is there. Our workers' comp a day is two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars per department. If we go to the general school, that's frequently will go over ten thousand dollars. They'll be between ten and twelve thousand dollars per department. So, that's what's in the face. Uh, they're also looking a little over the grant program. A lot of us are subsidized, and our equipment that we buy with the state fire risk grants, we call, we buy them at half this, it's fifty cent, it's a, it's a dollar a dollar program. So, if we're going to buy equipment in a year, we're going to buy thirty thousand dollars worth of replacement equipment, then why not apply for a grant and divide half costs? We pay fifty thousand, and the state pays fifty thousand dollars. They're also looking a little way with that grant program. And they're also looking a way, a little way with our pension and relief fund, which, uh, pays for short-term, uh, expenses in the case of a line of duty injury or death. I'll stop at this point while these guys talk, and then I'll close it out with one short second.
Good evening. Jimmy is, I'm with the Grove Volunteer Fire Department, and this is actually my thirtieth year of serving as the Grove. Two serves in my entire life has been riding the other fire trucks. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity, Commissioner's manager, to speak to you tonight. Uh, I want to elaborate on some of the things that Kevin mentioned as far as numbers, statistics, where we are today, as, as where we, uh, posted where we were in the early nineties and some a little longer than that. But I want to frame this around something that's going on right now. Right now, in Charleston South Carolina, today is the sixth anniversary of the Socha Super Shore Fire, acclaimed by Charleston firefighters. As we speak tonight, there's an memorial service being held on the site to commemorate and remember those firefighters that gave off. So, it does help us to have a reality check, grasp what is, this is more than numbers. This is much more than numbers. We're out here doing a real, a real service to this community, a real job that is really a dangerous job. It does not matter if you volunteer for forty years in a career department, doesn't matter. North Carolina lost a very young firefighter last week who was electrocuted in Wilkes County while investigating an active fire. He was in his early twenties with a small child. So, there is no discriminatory factor for these incidents. But I bring that to your attention just to remind everyone just, you know, what these folks do on a day-to-day basis. Cleveland County has three hundred and thirty volunteers actively in the fire service today. There's four hundred and forty-eight firefighters in the county overall, including municipalities. But as far as volunteers, which I'll speak mostly on today, there's three hundred and thirty. As Kevin said, we've transitioned from the fifties and sixties, from one and two bay fire stations that may have been sheds, and barns, and whatever else it may have been, to accommodate a new and greater fire service in our communities, to massive stations that you can see in some of the ones that have been recently built, uh, some of the beautiful stations you've seen in Pocle and, and Number Three area. Uh, we have to, we have to have these fire stations to accommodate the vehicles, the sizes, the numbers of vehicles that have grown based on our mission, that has also grown. We have puffers, brush units, rescue vehicles, aerial devices, specialty rescue vehicles, uniting. You see the news, you see all the different events that's going on, and probably going on right now with, with the water conditions outside. We have to be prepared for that. There's nobody else for us to call. So, these things come in costs, and not just an initial cost of purchasing, but a cost of books and a training mechanism that goes along with this. The service district in Cleveland County is made up of Bethlehem, Bullen Springs, Caesar's, Cleveland, Grover, Oak Grove, Pocle, Shanghai, and Waco departments. Together, we protect forty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine citizens in our primary capital areas, and approximately three hundred and seventeen square miles of the four hundred and sixty-sixth of the county. In addition, most of the service district, if not all, provides mutual or automatic aid to all these municipalities, so in effect, we're covering the entire county in a larger respect of the volunteer service. In two thousand and twelve, the service district, these nine departments responded to two thousand six hundred and thirty-six calls. And like Kevin mentioned, I do remember the early days in Rover, that we would run forty or fifty calls a year, and now we're two fifty to three hundred. So, it has increased significantly, and, and we don't see any downturn in that. Just a few cost comparisons to frame this for you. Radios, the old VHF brick radios, and I know you're running, remember it really well, and everybody, you know, kind of leaned to one side when you carried it. Those, they were costing roughly five hundred bucks back in, you know, nineteen ninety-ish in that area. Today, three thousand, thirty-five hundred, as I know you're aware, with the eight hundred radios, because they're all the parts you carry now. And I want to say, you know, at this moment, a lot of people in this room probably don't remember, but when the fire service was able to go to eight hundred, it was largely due to Kevin's work on the, on the federal grant. The grant he mentioned, we would still wouldn't be there had not been for that grant, so we're, we're grateful for that. Turnout gear to outfit one firefighter, thirteen hundred dollars in nineteen ninety, three thousand dollars in two thousand and thirteen. A pumper truck in nineteen ninety, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was about an average price. In two thousand and twelve, four hundred dollars, plus the equipment, which is an additional fifty to a hundred thousand, just depends on what kind of equipment you put on, and that is mandated equipment for ISO rating. Airbags, we call SCBA, uh, twenty-one hundred dollars in nineteen ninety, fifty-eight hundred dollars right now. These are just changes that have occurred not only in technology, but in committees and things that are added to these airbags for safety and for other reasons. But we don't have any choice in that. And the final number that I want to give you is probably the most staggering number that will hit home to everyone in this room, fuel costs. In nineteen ninety-five, this, this data is from the U.S. Energy Information Administration today, uh, one dollar and ten cents per gallon in nineteen ninety-five for diesel fuel, which all of our vehicles run that. The average now is three dollars and ninety-six cents, sometimes higher than that. We're fortunate that we get our gas across the line, or our fuel, it's a lot cheaper, but most, you know, most people are paying a bit more than that. So, you can see just the call volume as opposed, or in conjunction with the fuel costs, where we stand today. Training hours for volunteer. Firefighter one to two is three hundred and forty-five hours. Pedicle rescuers, a hundred and forty-one hours. EMT, if the department chooses to have EMTs, is additional two hundred hours. So, that's an eight-six hours straight in the door in the first couple of years that a volunteer will commit to at zero pay opposite. And then anywhere from thirty-six to a hundred hours annually to maintain their volunteer status, their active status. And when I was talking about fuel costs, we, we figured out a way to put fuel in the fire trucks, but these volunteers are driving their own personal vehicles. They're locked, they're running errands, running fire calls, who are trained, whatever that may be. The only help that they get is a fourteen cent, um, per mile tax claim under federal taxes for actually running calls. That's very little, that actually does the cost. That is not, you know, covered, you're actually costing. So, these people put this money in out of the pockets and don't, don't really question it at all. The National Volunteer Fire Council says that since nineteen eighty-four, volunteerism has declined in the United States by eighteen percent. In nineteen eighty-four, there were eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand volunteers, and in two thousand and eleven, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand. Now, what this means is, I know that's, that's nationally smarter record on around that, but when these numbers decrease, the volunteers, the pay stat increases, and you can see that in our state, counties next to us, and all across the country. We still have to have the same number of firefighters, it just depends on whether you have to pay them or not. So, these numbers are staggering of what the cost could be. Uh, most of the time, the decline in volunteerism is due to multiple jobs. People have so many things they have to do, they're working through three jobs, they just don't have time for any of them. And we tend to train these folks for five or ten years, from their teens to their early twenties, and then when they get families and all these jobs, we lose. So, that's what we're trying to, to keep as well. During this timeframe, um, volunteers decreased the cost of service from eleven point eight nine million, or excuse me, the cost of service was eleven point eight million nationally to thirty million in two thousand and eleven. The National Volunteer Fire Council does put a number on volunteer. And like Kevin mentioned, while you've got fifteen million dollars is what it costs to operate a career service. Roughly forty-five thousand dollars per firefighter is the figure of cost. The training value, training value is huge. These folks are also training for nothing, lots of training. Just for an example, and I, I worked in college, so this is an easy example for me to draw on, but the Cleveland County Fire Rescue College, uh, we were getting over seven hundred volunteers. Not only is that a, for the weekend school, not only is that a big impact for these people getting their training, it's a huge impact for their economy, Cleveland County, to fill all the hotels and restaurants on an annual basis. So, we're, we take very pride in that as well. State of North Carolina provides a big exemption for firefighters and rescue workers for training, so we don't have to pay for that. If we were, it would cost the county roughly three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars a year just for the training to maintain the fire service. And finally, what I want to mention is, uh, when well-equipped, ready-to-train firefighters are ready for service and responding in an adequate manner, like Kevin mentioned, with modern equipment, and able to put out the cars quicker, we keep business open, we keep people paying taxes, and we keep people employed. So, that's a huge thing that we want to mention as well. Our service district protects twenty-seven thousand and thirty-six taxable structures in Cleveland County. And we strive to make sure that we can meet those response time goals and not just go with the water on what's left. Cleveland County is very well represented at the state level in every aspect of fire protection. Uh, Kevin is a big part of that, working through the State Firemen's Association, and that's why we're here tonight, asking for support for the fire tax increase, and to give a thank you for your time.
Jimmy, commissioners, my name's Joe Starks. I'm a transplant. I chased a grand baby to York County in two thousand and eight. A cop did it, by the way. And she is the life of my life. I'm here to talk to you, I've thirty-five years in the fire service, and I'm here to talk to you tonight around the community aspect in the Grove Fire Department. I joined it with Chief Davis, and I want to talk a little bit about, let's just share a story, and then in that story, we'll talk about how that community is connected to that fire department, how, what it means. To visit Smith, we use her as a customer for a second. We'll talk about Mrs. Smith, and how we, you are connected to her, how we know the community, how we open the doors to community. And that is a volunteer system, and that's so critical. Dr. Demme, who was a famous staff musician, who created some, some wonderful things for us, and Ford Motor Company helped them a lot, and one of the things he said was, one of the most important numbers you'll have is the ones that are undoable. And I think that's what we're going to talk about a little bit. So, let's tell a story. Imagine this nine-thirty Tuesday morning. One of the hardest things to do, which is to get volunteers on the business daytime hour. So, we have to work, we have to staff a lot to get a few. So, statistically, we want thirty-something, fully equipped firefighters, so we can show nine of them in, in Monday, on Tuesday morning at nine-thirty. Let's say that Mrs. Smith has a kitchen fire, and tragically, she calls nine-one-one, and the communications, including county dispatches, Oak Grove, Waco, Bethlehem. All we get out of that is Oak Grove woman will respond with a minimum of two fire engines, those engines you articulated at four hundred thousand dollars a piece. Waco will come with another engine, that then will come with another. So, now we have four engines. They'll bring four people, maybe three people. That's sixteen people we have. Sixteen people who responded now with, what do we say, a, a million and a half dollars worth of rolling stock that's there. Oak Grove, for instance, is on a twenty-year rotation due to ISO. We have a six-nine rating, so we've got, we have those engines on a twenty-year life cycle management program. So, approximately every six, seven years, you have to buy an engine, you have to capitalize that out to fifty thousand or plus a, a year to do that, if you want to stay ahead of that. Today, Oak Grove's capital debt, which is, we've been behind since, uh, the capitalization of trying to build, we built a beautiful station, we toured now, did a lot of work. Chief Davis and the team actually recycled every piece of steel and everything out of that. Some of you were at the grand opening, and we appreciate you for that. So, when, when we get to Mrs. Smith's structure, we'll stick three people on, on the scene, they're going to grab an inch and three-quarter line, advance that line to the, to the kitchen area of the home. To do that, the value of that team is greater than twenty-five thousand dollars to get it off, just three people. Look to us, hose line is about eleven or twelve hundred dollars, and that's just one line, because that's the cost of the line. They have to be trained and skilled and set up for that. They'll carry a thermal imaging camera to be able to see in parallel, to see hot spots. That camera is twelve thousand plus. That's just the cost of doing business. So, for us to be safe, for us firefighters to be skilled, they have to bring the tools and the training to that. So, they set up this, this attack. We just roll, we have to roll thirty-five hundred gallons of water for that incident to maintain our ISO rate. So, we've got four engines, we've got a thousand gallons of each engine, we just put four thousand gallons of water there. We may or may not have a hydrant. To put a hydrant in in Oak Grove's district is an extra twenty-six hundred dollars if we decide to augment the system in some way. We, the story continues. We, we, we meet with Mrs. Smith. We meet with people we know. We, we try to reconnect a customer back to, to their lives, because we know those customers took. We, the story continues, we meet with Mrs. Smith, we meet with people we know, we try to reconnect a customer back to their lives, because we know those customers typically. And when we have trouble with those customers, there's no more, there's no more compassionate, compassionate people than people who were neighbors that you are. And I think that's an unmeasurable. For instance, when Waco gets there, our best man, Bill, support the extinguishment, and his support with salvage and oak roof, the ability to prevent photo damage, to stop that fire and do that. So all those things are part of the customer service that the community brings when the volunteers come to that call. So what's it take? We talked about, every five years, Oak Grove has to replace five SCBA. If they have fifteen breathing packs or air packs, a life cycle management, a good business cycle says you don't buy all those at one time, buy them as, you know, life cycle management program, buy the engines that one, buy the hoes that one. We need, we need four times those nine firefighters we just described on that first alarm, just to be able to make sure we have enough people there. And we've got to hear, we talked about the price of gear. So it takes, in addition, Oak Grove estimated last year, over fifteen hundred fundraising hours given by the volunteers. So, and you talk about the price of gas and the service district operating, we were operating on the same rate we've been operating on for a long time. And I'm going to cut this real short, get back to Kevin, and here's the number I think that makes the most sense to me. There's eight thousand seven hundred and sixty hours in a year. If you take that eight thousand seven hundred and sixty hours, and you divide that by what we're asking for, for Oak Grove, for instance, that budget, that capital and expense overhead to our community is twenty-three dollars an hour total. I think that's a pretty good price. Thank you for your time, appreciate you very much. Kevin, you wanted to sum up your comments?
Yeah, yeah, just take just one second. As the Luciaries of the counties, but you guys have an immense task before, ahead of you, and we appreciate that, and we respect your position, whatever that may be. I think we've outlined what needs to happen, and if there's more information that's needed, we will be gladly to prepare that and get it for you. And this is on, this only scratches the surface of what is ahead of our services of this county and state and throughout. Jimmy spoke about serving on the state association, so routinely get across the state and see this other places as well. So this is nothing new, and it's happened all over. I did, I did print up one article, I apologize, I didn't have the resources at home to copy this. I will give it to Karen, if you guys would like a copy, I guess you'll make a copy for that. I printed up one article, and this comes from the News and Record of, I guess, Rattler News World, this sits, this story, this article sits in Guilford County. But there's a whole list of counties across the state that's going through the same thing. While it's a budget issue here, this sits in some revealed, but it's also lack of volunteers and all to do it, so they're going to have to find another way to do it. But the county commissioner there, I'll let you guys read this, I will broadcast everybody his political affiliations, I'll let you guys. He says that these are the people in the community who answer the call when there's an emergency, we have to give them what they need to do their job. So I'll stop at that and then take any questions that you guys have been having.
At this time, anyone with a vision of three to four, or against the vision at this time, that's all. Anyone picking four or against the vision at this time? You know what else? The state of the period closed. Commissioners, at this time, are there any questions about my county manager, or if you'd like to make any comments about the budget, or if you have any questions that we want to make reservation? Anyone want to go up that far?
I was, I went first, Tom. I appreciate the information from the fire service. We're probably way behind eight months, just on several other things, and I think that y'all know we can't keep color up on the office, this is just a slight measure in doing it. It's also in putting the money for the people served, basically, it's not for other services or particular services that they deserve. I moved my house with the rescue squad, and they're just about dead, thinking of the past, for the same reason, why have the volunteers been so much training mandated from the state that people who have regular jobs can't do mandated training? And the ones that does the training say, hey, why don't I get paid for the service? So we're really fortunate that we have the volunteers in the county that we do it. Also comment on the increased giving fees to landfill and so forth, that most people don't know, the landfill is a separate embassy, it operates on its own money, it doesn't operate on tax dollars. As everyone knows, the other businesses, since the economy's hit, they've had to increase fees on account of fuel, different things come up in their business. This major thing is hours that we're looking at, is twenty-two years down the road, it's going to need twenty million dollars to close the landfill office. If we don't act responsible now, and start preparing, boy, twenty years down the road, somebody's going to get hit with a big, big tax increase from the public. And my figure is, the people who use it, let them pay for the fees to close it, because, you know, they're taking the drag into it. And now that's my opinion. So I think that these two things that we've got for us is really a must, if we're looking down the road for the future. So many towns, even our state, the federal government has kicked the chair down the road, law is known. That's why we've got a few deficits in the federal government. We've got problems with the budget in the state, and that's one thing that I'm looking for, that not only for me, but for my children, grandchildren, not just that, it's a big burden, is we have to, by doing this, doing something now, to protect them in the future.
Mr. Chair, I can relate to Mrs. Smith, as an eight-year-old, my mother woke me up early one morning, and we lost everything we had in the family to the fire. I can, I can attest to say to my grandfather, I lose his life fighting the fire, trying to save our belongings, which we saved, I sent a thousand of you guys, you know where I stand. I'm for this, I'm for this as a phase one step toward what needs to be done in this county, to make things right for large departments. I can also say I was in the store a few hours before that store went down to Charleston. I know what I saw and know what families went through in agonized moments. So often, we take for granted what should be so dear. Firefighters, EMS, fallen in that category unfortunately, but where you've been, where I've been, be all that means. So I'm with you, I'm for you, for this county continuing to work hard to make things right for you guys. And I think we'll continue to do that, and I want to thank county manager and the rest of the commissioners for making the life, making the step one to make your situation better.
And I'd like to thank the volunteer firemen that are out there, and they're in their lives on the line out there to service our community. And I appreciate the leadership that they have, and know it's not as easy as it used to be for volunteer firemen out there, to keep them with those, to have them out, support the community. I know from top end fire, volunteer firemen, and the firemen, the ones that's in your blood, that they do strive to be out there and support our community. But it takes a lot of work, because it's not as easy getting off of a job, you know, a full-time job to run a fire. So you do have to have the hours banned. And I think they're not behoove us to take care of what we need out there to service our community, because we can't afford the volunteers that we have out there for those who be paying jobs down the road. We don't do what we need to do to support them and take care of them, we're in trouble at that. And, you know, I commend the commissioners that work to overhaul the budget and try and come to a good conclusion that's something that'll take care of our community, looking out for our services, looking out for the landfill, looking out for our future, because we have so much on the line if we don't look down the road and look at what we need to do for our future, and putting the monies in the right place to support the community, because that's what we're here for. And we appreciate your support as well.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a couple of comments, and this is one of those, I've said before, this is, in my opinion, the most important, one of the most important meetings we have all year, is to discuss our county budget. And there's a lot of motion involved in this one to make. I've got a lot of friends that are on the volunteer fire department, some of my lifelong friends that I've grown up, and so it's been a very tough review of the budget this year. And with your involvement, I'd like to read off, because I'll leave a motion out there, read off about the fifteenth version of this short thing I'm going to read here. First, I want to thank county manager and finance department staff for putting so much time into the budget. I know it wasn't easy at all. Our county budget should reflect our priorities. While this budget goes a long way to that end, there are some serious concerns that I have. We still have so many people in our county out of work, others struggling to make ends meet, and parents and grandparents concerned about the direction of every level of government and how it will affect their families. This budget is asking more Cleveland County families at a time when many can't afford them. I support our volunteer fire departments, and would support an increase in the tax rate if we would agree to decrease our tax rate by the same amount. However, even though we are considering a decrease in our direct funding to the fire departments by three hundred thousand dollars out of our general taxes, now that money will go to something else, no cuts in our general tax rate. Same is true with our decreased funding in Cleveland County schools by over half million dollars, mental health by over a hundred fifty thousand, or almost a hundred fifty thousand, no cuts. This county, this county is going to spend a lot more money next year than we did this year. My priority for our residents is the safety of our residents, fire, rescue, and law enforcement, quality schools, infrastructure to allow for businesses to bring quality jobs to our area, and residents to have services they can depend on. We need quality people providing these services and showing our appreciation to them. That's why I really do appreciate their county employees, what we're doing for them, that they deserve more than we can afford. The bottom line is this for me, our families are going to pay higher taxes and fees because of this budget. It goes against my promise to them that put me in this office and against my convictions. And again, I empathize, and I would support the increase with fire tax if we could decrease our overall budget, sure would, because these guys are heroes.
My comment basically, I won't throw out, but the tip of the key, as long as everyone knows, I think that it would be irresponsible act on the part of county commissioners not to tip the deal being passed on to a future generation of county commissioners, and having to come up with a large sum of money to help the landfill in the future when we have had a study, we know we should have done it in the past, and it's time now to pass that tip and move on toward the future, so that when we do reach that point, we will have funds to make sure that our landfill continues for a long period of time. I know what it is here, it sounds here, they have worked diligently in, over the past, try to make sure that Cleveland County, Cleveland County citizens, basically are protected in the landfill arena for years to come, not only acquire property, but they've actually ensured the public of a public landfill for many years to come. Again, I think it's irresponsible that we, after having the study done, going how much money it costs to close that landfill, capital to give it a term, by not going ahead and making that decision now and moving toward it in the future. On the part of the fire district, fire taxes, what I would like to say to you guys, at the beginning of this meeting, I asked for the veterans to stand. Well, I equate you guys on a local level as to our national military veterans, and I'd like for you to stand. I'm not expecting, I, you guys, all the work that you've done. I remember ten years working for the team, I, fire departments volunteered, and there's nothing, you tell it, I might tell the truth, but there is nothing unreal about wearing a Scott Airbag as always, and going into a working fire, it scared you, and people putting their lives on the line. And every single day, the state's changing the rules, every day, the increase in the prices of vehicles and training is increasing. I remember one time, y'all might remember Johnny Caldwell, he and I were under a building in Kings Mountain, and the fire was ardent, and the work fell down on top of us, and we couldn't see anything, all of us never learned anything, all the others did. But that's one of those, I still remember. And the one big thing of the safe, whether it be our law enforcement, whether it be our volunteer rescue, or whether it be the fire department, what I would say to you is, that if anybody cared or looked at the charter of Cleveland County, we are responsible to make sure of the public's safety in those three areas. And so even though I don't like the base act, I see the need, I know the need, and I respect what you do. And I'm with the commissioners. About the whole budget now, please. I also want to get, I need a motion to approve or not approve the budget for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Are there comments?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, it's supposed to be approved, as presented by the county manager.
I think the whole would approve two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Allen, any other comments? If you're not on favor, please raise your right hand. That's part of the fourth one. Thank you, guys, you know how much we appreciate your service, and I say, been there, done that, but still our responsibility to make sure we're taken care of. And I hope that this helps a little bit, and we could be really good in the future. Thank you for coming later for your comments. Moving to a regular agenda. I'm going to actually ask for my lawyer, Sam Walker, to go over here.
Mr. Chair, I want to introduce Sam Walker to the coordinate of Health Services, and Tim Allen, who is representative of Republic Services. And I think last year I introduced them as two distinguished young gentlemen.
Oh, you're like a lady.
I think we might, you have someone else, would you go over there?
Yes, Sam.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Stevie. I got carried away about the distinguished gentleman. Steve Pruitt, the landfill manager. Cleveland County awarded Republic Services of North Carolina, which is GDS of Cleveland County, the franchise holder from July first, two thousand twelve, through June thirty in two thousand seventeen. The Republic Services has requested the following fee increases for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. The residential curbside pickup, disposal rate will increase fifteen percent, and the service rate will increase one point nine percent based on last year's consumer pricing index. The service rate of one point nine percent will go directly to Republic Services, which is GDS of Cleveland County, they haven't had a service rate increase in three years. Unlike companies like FedEx and UPS, the animals- and UPS that add on service rates in surcharge, Republic has been able to do so since the county sets their rates. The disposal rate and the service rate will increase the total monthly rate from $18.36 to $19.15. This is a 79 cent increase per month. The second increase is the commercial rate. Disposal rate will increase 15% and service rate will increase 1.9%. This increase will be passed on to commercial customers. The pricing depends on the size of the container and the frequency of the service. And the last one is the industrial roll-off. The service rate will increase 1.9% and disposal rate will be determined at the landfill scales by the distance haul. On February 12, 2013, the Board of Health voted unanimously to increase the solid waste fee and has submitted this request to the conditions.
Any questions? Any question for the commissioners? Just recommendation for the franchise haul rate increase has been approved by the Health Board, Commissioner Hutch and representatives on that board, and we have a number of individuals here that should ask questions. At this time, are there any questions to go with him?
No, I have any questions, but just to comment, it is a franchise that we grant to the hauler, but it had been open for its different ones, and it has so happened. This is the only hauler that agreed to provide all the services in the contract. That's the reason that we wound up owning one franchise hauler, because the others didn't want to do household garbage. They didn't want to do full law, so it was a visible mistake on it. If you look, the distribution power is passed on the same charge in their budgets to reflect the one we did the landfill.
I have a question. Is the increase in part due to the increased tipping fees during the budget?
We feel very, no, we're racing the tipping fee is landing at 15%. They should be able to pass that on. Historically in the past, the county commissioners always have had them to pass on the fees that we increased. And the other fee, 1.9, they're asking for, I think on the same price that, which they've not had over three years, at 1.9 over three years, it's kind of, we appreciate them going to do the opposite.
Thank you, Commissioners. We're correcting today. Stevie has shown the increase, there's 5.8% to offset our increase. Any other questions? I need a motion to approve the franchise haul rate increase.
I'll make a motion to approve the rate increase.
Commissioner Hutchins? I'll second. Commissioner Holbrook, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. No flag sign.
Next, Dean Allen, is resolution to change meeting day, 4 to July 11. We've got a change meeting day to July 9. I'll have a motion to move the action to July 9. Appreciate it.
I like the question. Let's move to July 9.
Commissioner Allen, second. Vice Chair, any discussion? If you're not, please raise your right hand. There is a need to have a closed session for a legal matter, and let me see here, a closed session discussion legal matter for North Carolina General Statute 143, Act 318, on 11/8/3. At this time, we go on closed session.